Hour is seven o'clock, having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are in attendance and a quorum has been established. Council, we have before us the minutes of the regular meeting of February 17th, 2015. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes, to those minutes? Seeing none, they stand approved. Tonight, we have a very, very special guest with a presentation tonight. We are very privileged tonight to have the National Park Service Superintendent here for the Minra Corridor, Mr. John Enfison, representing, of course, the National Park Service. And John, I'm going to turn it over to you. We have a presentation. We understand we have a very important celebration coming up in the next year. Welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having me. Thank you for inviting me, Mayor, to come down and do this. I have been directed, as I will say in my, in my comments, by the Director of the National Park Service. Every superintendent is supposed to meet with their communities. That's easy for Pipestone National Monument, because they go into Pipestone, or Voyagers National Park, because they go into International Falls. I have 21 communities in my park area. So I'm trying to, you know, I've told people I want this to be a 72-mile-long national park celebration. It's not just Minneapolis-St. Paul. It's the northern corridor to the southern corridor. So I wanted to get down here. Representative McCollum and Representative Ellison hosted meetings in Minneapolis and St. Paul. I have a meeting up in Anoka in a few weeks, and I definitely want to get down to Hastings. So let me tell you a little bit about what this is about. So often when I wear this uniform, and this happened today, a couple of times in Hastings, people want to know what the DNR is down here for, and they want to know, you know, what, what I'm doing. And I, and I tell them I'm with the National Park Service, National, think Yellowstone, Yosemite. So what state park do you work for? You know, getting that idea that there's a national park, there's a national organization here is really hard sometimes. And so I want to, I'll use some images to, to kind of anchor that in your minds, as well as those who are going to watch this program throughout the weeks, in coming weeks. So there is a 72-mile-long national park corridor. It runs from the top of Hennepin County, it's that yellow area, top of Hennepin County to the bottom of Dakota County. Fifty-four thousand acres, of which we own 64. So we are a partnership park. Everything we do has got to be in partnership. We don't have much of a hammer. We just have to be persuasive and, and work with communities like Hastings and all the other communities. I'm here to let you know about an upcoming centennial of the National Park Service. And what I'm looking for is, I want to get you thinking about how we can work together to leverage that centennial for both of us. It's not just about us, it's about our communities as well. In 2016, the National Park Service turns 100. The national campaign is set to launch in about a month from now, early April, this national campaign. You're going to start seeing stuff all over the media. The centennial goal is to connect with, let me show you this first. So this is 1916, August 25th is the official birthday, but it's going to be a year-long celebration, kicking off, building up in, in April, but really throughout 2016. And the goal is to connect with and create the next generation of park visitors, supporters, and advocates. The National Park Service realizes that it needs to connect with new generations and different generations of, to get visitors to come to our national parks. We know that that next generation is not going to look like the previous generations. It's going to be more diverse, and it's going to be more urban. So they're looking at parks like mine, this one here, to get people to come to national parks like Yellowstone, Yosemite, the Capitol Mall, and Washington, DC. The NPS has to create a new generation of stewards. If we're going to get people to care about these national parks, we need to start working on that now, thinking about how we get people into parks around the country. And we need to create the next generation of advocates, because we always have to protect and defend the idea of parks and these national places with our national stories throughout America. And cities all around the country are facing the same issue. Locally, how do you get people out to parks, cultural institutions, historical societies? How do we get that next generation engaged in, in what we just maybe take for granted? There's some other goals we have, along with, along with the ones I mentioned. We want to reintroduce the National Park Service to the public. We want to expand their understanding of who we are and how we affect their lives. We want to invite visitors to find their park in all that we do, redefining what the word "park." And when I say "their park," that means it could be a local park here in Hastings, because if we know we get people to the local parks in Hastings, get them outside, get them to Shar's Bluff, maybe they'll come to a national park someday. So it's about lowest park to biggest parks. So how does the Mississippi National River and Recreation Area fit into this campaign, and how does it relate to Hastings? One of my goals is to get people here to realize that there is a National Park Service here on, the national park here on the Mississippi River, and that it features places of great beauty and great history, just like these other places I've showed you in some of these slides. To most people inside and outside the National Park Service, the Mississippi National River and Recreation Area is this ungainly, odd thing with this big, long name that nobody understands. How do you have a park that's 54,000 acres, but only owns 64? It just doesn't work. What I like to say is we're like Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, and the centennial is our foggy Christmas Eve. You know, we've got the shiny nose, but they need us to lead the way into the next century of the national park system. It's places like Hastings through this corridor that people are going to come from to visit Voyagers National Park, or Pipestone National Park in Minnesota, or go to the St. Croix National Scenic River, or Grand Portage, just those in the state, much less anywhere else nationally. They need people to find out about it, and those people are here. As you can see, as you see, you'll start seeing advertisements for this national campaign. They're going to feature Yellowstone, Yosemite, the Statue of Liberty, Lincoln Memorial. And so you're going to start seeing these. But you know what? We have something just as iconic here, the Mississippi River. It is truly one of America's great icons, and we should celebrate that and tout that to the whole nation and to visitors who want to come here. There's other national parks on the Mississippi River, Effigy Mounds, the arch at St. Louis, Jazz, and Jean Lafitte down in New Orleans, but this is the only national parks that's mission is to tell the story of the Mississippi River. And so we tell it locally, but we also try to tell that story nationally. And although we don't have much land, a good part of Hastings downtown is within this national park. We have the opportunity to use this centennial to leverage people knowing about you as well as us. There's going to be over 400 national park units engaged in this national centennial campaign. There's going to be celebrity movie stars, authors, and musicians. There's going to be a TV series potentially, an IMAX film. The Rose Parade next year is going to feature floats representing national parks. So this is going to be a big, big national campaign, like I say, that's going to roll out in about a month. So we have spectacular scenery here in communities large and small with unique character. We have the Twins, the Vikings in the wild up in the Twin Cities, and I would love to help, I would love to hear people start saying, "And we have a national park," as part of a way to sell these communities, not just locally, but nationally and internationally. Viking Cruises, as you've heard, I'm sure, is coming here, and they're going to look for really unique and special places, like Hastings and other cities along the Mississippi River. So we have a chance, as cities look, how do we attract young people to live here, to go to school here, to, to work here and raise a family? Young people are looking for places with energy and excitement, enthusiasm, and diversity, and, and we have a chance to offer that, especially with a place like, with a national park added into that mix. So tonight, I just wanted to plant the seed. I had a dinner with Dick and Charlotte, who you may know, Dick Graham and Charlotte Vick, and talked about art and things we could do. The purpose of my coming here is to say, as this centennial starts coming, we're in the planning phase of right now, up to 2016, and then we're going to start implementing in 2016, what can we do with you? What can we do with the city of Hastings that we can put a, a logo on this, Find Your Park logo, is a new logo they have coming up. I have a little centennial pin logo on, it's a centennial logo for the national park system. Can we co-brand things that you're working on related to the river and doing great things for the river and the national, and inherently than the national park? So I, I want to make an offer to you that I, I want to start working with the city of Hastings to figure out how we can take this campaign and boost your image as well as ours. So I will stop there.
Well, thank you very much for that fine presentation. Council, I'm going to open up to questions. Are there questions or comments? Councilmember Schultz?
John, thank you very much. That's, it's great news about the efforts that you're going to be putting, the National Park Service is going to be putting forward. Will you be giving us any information on how we might be able to partner on, on doing some of this work, or sort of what do you see as the next steps that we might have to take?
So I, I put my contact information up there. We have also hired, just last week, a centennial coordinator, because I've been in that position right now, which I really don't have a lot of time for. But the centennial coordinator is really dynamic, and she is going to be able to really do a lot of work for us. So I will funnel probably a lot of things to her, but I want, like I say, I want to, is there a project down here, like the Riverfront Renaissance? How can we partner with you on, in some way, on that? The Hudson Sprayer Building, is there a way to partner on that? You know, your Rivertown days, is that something we could participate in and, and boost, you know, with putting the logo on it, make it a centennial event somehow? We're kind of brainstorming, so as you start brainstorming and thinking about things, you know, let me know, and, and we can figure out what we can do together. And I'll keep working with our centennial coordinator to, you know, try to figure things out to do down here as well.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Superintendent Enfison. We're so glad to have you here. I look forward to the discussions. We, we very much want a relationship, a strong relationship with the National Park Service, and we, we have pride here in our community being part of the National Park Service. I think people in Hastings know we're a part of a park, and we just need to get the word out to let our neighbors out there and tourists and visitors to know that they're in a national park. And I see nothing but great things in the future in our, in our relationship, and I'm looking forward to meeting the new coordinator, and not only in 2016, but I think that can be a springboard to a whole bunch of other activities that we could coordinate on in the future.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Okay, Council, next, is there any council items to be considered? Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Mayor. There's an item that I want to put on during announcements that we can just have a quick discussion on.
Okay.
And I don't want to divulge what it is yet.
Okay. Under announcements, I'll make sure I recognize you.
Under announcements, yes. This will make sure that everybody pays attention all the way to the end. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll write that down. Okay? Any other items to be considered? Okay? Consent agenda, Council, what's your wish on the consent agenda? Councilmember Loggia makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brock's. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing to amend City Code, Chapter 150, Section 150.01, the State Building Code. And Melanie, will you introduce that item for us?
I'll stand in for Tom Bach and tonight, Your Honor and Council. Tonight, you're asked to hold a public hearing and then consider an ordinance amendment to adopt the latest building codes, state building codes, and, and our land use, Chapter 150. I know Tom reached out to the council to see if there are any questions or clarification. This is a pretty standard action, and staff would recommend approval, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay. I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. Anyone here who wish to speak to the changes to the state, Chapter 150 of our code that's reflective of the state building code? Anyone here who wish to speak to that particular item? Okay? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, we'll have that before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to adopt. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to that motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing in regards to a rezon of property at 107 West 21st Street from R3 to C3. John, welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. What we have before you tonight is a small rezoning of this triangular-shaped parcel located at 21st and County Road 47. The picture here shows a house that was demolished about a year ago. The property currently is zone R3, which is medium-density residence. We're proposing a rezoning of that property to C3, Community Regional Commerce. When you take a look at the area, 21st Street and this area to the north right now is currently commercial. You may recall that when QuickTrip was looking at the site a couple of years ago, they were contemplating the acquisition of this parcel and, but they were not able to take acquisition of it at that time. However, it has become bank-owned, and QuickTrip has made an offer, and they are looking to close on the property shortly. And because of the other holdings they have here, this would fit nicely as a commercial-designated property. Our comprehensive plan as well, this is a pretty bad picture, but shows the property over here being zoned commercial, the red area, all the way over to Eddie Street. So the rezoning we have is consistent with our comprehensive plan as well. The Planning Commission did review this at their February meeting, did recommend approval of it on a unanimous vote. They did take a look at this over a couple different sessions. The first period in January, we did have a public hearing, had the resident just directly to the west of the property come and speak to the item. He also attempted an acquisition of the parcel, was unsuccessful. The Planning Commission upon the first hearing was a little bit hesitant towards rezoning of the property with some uncertainty on the ownership. That has been cleared up now. So this is a public hearing. We can open that up at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wish to speak to the rezon of property at 107 West 21st Street from R3 to C3? Anyone here who wish to speak to that particular item? Okay? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, we will consider this item. What's your wish? Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Loggia.
Thank you, Your Honor. A question for you, John. The owner to the west who made an unsuccessful bid for the property, can you give the nature of the comments that he or she had, I gather it was a he from, from your pronouns, that, that he had regarding this? Did he sound favorable? Did he sound unfavorable?
During the meeting, it appeared his reason for acquisition would create a larger buffer area between his house and any impending commercial development in the future.
Fair enough. That is mathematically true. Then I guess my, my second question regards the ownership by, by QuickTrip. They have a plan for a totally different site, and did they make the bid, winning bid on this before or after that, the success of that plan?
Sure. Councilmember, they did that after the approval of the plans that are currently under construction a few blocks to the north. I think in their long-term reasoning for the, the property, they do own all the property here but for the corner where the repair garage is, and I don't believe they're looking to put another store on this site, but looking at their long-term acquisitions or be able to sell the property becomes a more sellable piece with the further frontage around County Road 47.
Okay. And of course, the private use of property is, you know, once we, once we rezon it, it's theirs to, to sell as, as they wish for the purposes, commercial purposes that they wish, the new owner wishes. I just want to make sure that we're clear that it does not appear to us at this time, we are not rezoning this in an effort to have a second QuickTrip with, you know, two QuickTrips within a mile of each other or anything like that, should there be any confusion in the public on that point. Thank you for helping me clarify, Your Honor, and thank you, John.
Okay. We have a motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Council, just to inform you that under, since we are rezoning property from residential to commercial, state statutes requires a supermajority vote, which will require five votes. Seeing that there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution site plan for Quality Conveyors' expansion at 540 Spiral Boulevard. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Outlined here is the Quality Conveyors' site. The red area on your map shows the new building construction, which would be about a 4,700-square-foot addition to the existing building at 540 Spiral Boulevard, with the blue area representing a expanded parking lot and new parking lot area towards the Spiral Boulevard end. The Planning Commission did review this at their February 23rd meeting. They did recommend approval of it on a unanimous vote. We did not have anyone speak to this issue for or against it during the meeting. With the approval or with the building itself, the site improvements will be limited to just these areas shown. The, the building here will be proposed as similar to the materials on the existing building, which is more of a metal, metal construction. However, there is going to be some significant changes to what the building looks like afterwards to what the building looks like today. So there will be an improvement, there will be some more windows, and it's one of these items under architectural controls that when you have an existing, an existing building that does not meet architectural standards, we do have some flexibility for any additions to, to match that of the, the previous building. But in this situation here, it is an improvement from what it looks like today as to what it looks like afterwards. The parking lot area itself, there'll be about 14 spaces in there that'll be, be redone per code, and we have representatives here from Quality Conveyors, Lloyd Lottewagon, and David Harris, the architect, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Council, this item is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn?
So a quick question, off of your aerial view there, it looks like there's some trees that might be taken out with the parking lot. Was there any talk of adding more trees?
Yeah. Councilmember, with the trees, there will be some new, there'll be these existing mature trees here which will stay. There'll be a new tree over here, east of the parking lot, and then some new shrubs along the base of the building at this location.
Okay. I just want to confirm that those three were staying there. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Council, Schultz makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Brock's. Councilmember Schultz?
I have a question. John, so is the, the, there's the new building, and will that building be used to, to store some of the, the sheet metal that, that they need in their, in their fabrication? Or are there going to be, and, and will there be new employees or exact, can you tell me a little bit more about what's going to happen?
Sure, Councilmember. I'll make, I'll make an attempt, and Lloyd, if you want to add anything, please feel free to do so. I believe there's going to be a handful of new employees that will be added through this. Is that correct?
What is handful?
It'll be about four people. And then it'll be used for manufacturing, not just storage.
I just want, since, we didn't get a chance to get that on record, just for the matter of the record, the applicant indicated about four new jobs, or four jobs that will be created there?
They will be doing manufacturing, it's not just storage.
That's correct.
Okay. John, also, it, it's good to know that even though they weren't required to make changes on the design, that they are willing to do that, because I think that's really going to help with the, you know, the quality look of the building and all that. I think, I thank you very much for doing that.
Okay. Councilmember Loggia?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, something I'm starting to ask, so the applicant shouldn't take this personally, I'm asking on any kind of site plan change like this nowadays, is, is the applicant in, you know, compliance with all necessary building codes? I mean, is there anything pending, you know, anything, anything like that that we just need to worry about, or anything that we need in terms of the property, you know, settled there, there in all ways, conforming with the city codes and city regulations?
Sure. Councilmember, I'm not aware of, of anything unusual about this circumstance here. When we get plans initially, we will go through a Development Review Committee with building and fire and engineering, and look through the plans to determine any pitfalls that may come up, and I'm not aware of any with this project.
I appreciate that, and thank you. I didn't think there would be anything. All right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any further comment to, or any further discussion to a motion that's before the body? Okay? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you. Next, Council, we have before us a resolution for a conditional use permit at Levy Park Rotary Pavilion. John?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the council is well aware of this project. We've discussed it on a number of different occasions here. The purpose of tonight's application is a conditional use permit, which is necessary in order to build a structure below the regulatory flood elevation of the Mississippi River. So what exactly does that mean? The 100-year flood level, as it's more commonly called, is about 693 feet. The base floor elevation of the pavilion area will be about one foot below that, at 692. That does not mean it's at the elevation of the river's edge. It's probably still 15 or 18 feet above the ordinary level of the river. But with FEMA and the flood maps, that is designated as a potential flood hazard. One of the things that's required within the conditional use permit is that the building be constructed in such a way that it can be flooded. And with being an open, an open area, no walls, no sides, water will be able to flow through there if it comes to that point, and it'll be constructed in a way to withstand flooding. So we did have the Planning Commission take a look at this at their last meeting. They did recommend approval of it on a unanimous vote. We also did contact the DNR to get any comment that they may have on this. We did hear back from them that they had no additional comment for this project. You may recall that in October of last year, we did approve a variance request for the sighting of it, because it is within that 150-foot setback from the Mississippi River. So that was something that was already done. And this kind of shows where the regulatory flood elevation comes through, right here at 694, and this being at 692 here, the whole structure being about 65 feet back from the river itself. And is what the project looks like, and I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Maybe you want to go back to what that looked like there, that first picture, Councilpeople get an idea. Thank you. That, that's looking from the, from the north, right?
Right.
From the river, looking toward the pavilion. Is that correct?
I should know that. North elevation, yes.
Yeah. So it's looking, it's looking south. You're standing north, looking south.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Council, this is now before us, I want to caution you, since a conditional use permit is being requested due to city ordinance, this will require six votes, 75 percent. So six votes is required for the conditional use permit. What's, Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Loggia makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. Councilmember Loggia?
Thanks again, Your Honor. John, the, withstanding a flood, obviously water is a part of a flood. I, I also know that, you know, driftwood can be a bit of an issue. Now, where I grew up on the East Coast, driftwood comes in adorable little chunks, because the ocean's already pre-pulverized it for, you know, little children's use and picking them up in the sand and throwing them at their big sister. But in, here in Mississippi River, the water generally doesn't do as good a job at breaking down very large pieces. So I, it, does withstanding a flood mean any level of being able to handle a tree, you know, coming down the river at some sort of force? And if so, I mean, obviously, we can't foresee every event, and some things are flood-resistant, and we don't expect to be flood-proof. But what level of flood resistance, or what kinds of things get put into consideration when an architect puts together a design like this?
Sure. Well, I could begin to answer that a little bit, and Nick, if you want to add in a little bit, feel free as well. The building itself, there's certain building code regulations that need to be followed for floodproofing, and that's not only for water flow, but also for various materials that may be floating down the river, and its ability to withstand those bumps that would come through there. So I, I can't say for certain, under every circumstance, that there wouldn't be an issue, but for most items that would come down, the building regulations take that into consideration. Fair statement?
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. That's, I suspected so, just wanted to get confirmation. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Schultz?
John, are we going to have to renew this conditional use permit every year?
Councilmember, no. We will have, this will go with the property in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion before the body, seeing no further discussion. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. The Council, I'd like to make an announcement that the Council will shortly go into closed-door session pursuant to attorney-client privilege for the purpose of discussing strategies for potential litigation with the general contractor for the City of Hastings. Before we do that, though, we're going to have announcements. Am I missing something?
Yep, we have the CBDG budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm way ahead of schedule. Let's go back. We are under authorized supplemental for the 2015 CBD, the Community Development Block Grant Budget. I'm sorry, John, let's give you one more thing to do.
It's very exciting, I know. We are getting money, which is always a good thing here. The CBDG budget, as you're aware, is federal grant dollars that are allocated to the city from Dakota County. We have about $62,000, $63,000 available for our use this year. Little bit different from in other years, typically, we've used this for assessment abatement, but being this year, we have a lot of commercial property and less need for that, we are proposing to allocate the entire fund into housing rehabilitation. We do have the ability in the future to modify that, transfer funds around if there's other things that do come up, but the proposal would be to put that towards housing rehabilitation for 2015. So I can stand for any questions.
Council, the issues before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Logi. That motion is now before the body. John, I just, just a short statement, I just want to say, I think it's appropriate that we do that this year, because obviously, our project may not require those funds to be toward property assessment abatement, but it's only one time, and I think that our value, that we want to keep that program funded in the future as we look at other neighborhoods, just I want to state that as a matter of policy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Logi.
Thanks, Your Honor. Another quick and generally supportive question. John, how will folks learn about this opportunity and be able to apply for rehabilitation?
Sure. Councilmember, it's, we have existing rehabilitation programs, grant, or loan programs that we could use those funds for, to operate through HEDRA. There may be other funding opportunities, other loan opportunities, grant opportunities we're looking at for downtown in particular, that these could be used for as well. So I guess the short answer is, we'll know more in the future.
Sure. In general, and for the sake, since there might be people watching tonight, they might be saying, ooh, hey, you know, rehabilitation loan program, I'd like to learn me a little bit more about that. I just wanted to maybe encourage them to call City Hall if they do, and if that's the case, presumably, we'll be able to answer at least whatever questions we can at that time, pending the availability of the actual dollars. All right, thank you.
I'm sort of glad we didn't skip this one. That's good. Councilmember Balsanik.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, but you know what? For the first time, Councilmember Logi took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? We do have a motion before the body? Is there any further discussion to the motion? Okay, okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Now, let me peruse the agenda one more time. Okay, the Council will shortly be going into closed-door session pursuant to attorney-client privilege for the purpose of discussing strategies for potential litigation with the general contractor for the City of Hastings Project 2014-3. Before we do that, however, we're going to first take comments from the audience. Is there anyone here who would like to comment before the audience tonight? I see my cousin Sam's here. Sam, have you got anything to say tonight? No? Okay, all right. Seeing none, we'll go to announcements. Councilmember Balsanik had an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I don't know how many people know this, but Viking Cruise Lines is dedicating $1 billion to invest in cruise ships going up and down the Mississippi River from New Orleans to St. Paul. And looking at an article in the paper over the weekend, there are cities that are lining up wanting to participate in this in some way, shape, or form. For example, Red Wing is already in contact with Viking. Red Wing, very similar to us, is doing a redevelopment of their riverfront and is looking at potential ways that they might be able to get some of their ships to dock and get people to come off and spend their money in Red Wing. Stillwater wants Viking to take a right turn and head up to Stillwater rather than, you know, just heading directly up to St. Paul, so they probably have to do a U-turn, something like that. I guess they can actually, from what they anticipate, they can get one of those ships underneath the lift bridge. At any rate, I would propose that Hastings contact Viking and see what types of things they are looking for in terms of potential places where they can dock and let people off and enjoy themselves. I think we have to assume that they're not just going to get onboard ship in New Orleans and just take one big ride all the way up. There are going to be places where they get off and enjoy themselves at different sites. So I'd like to see if we could get Hastings to become a part of that. And so what I'm looking for is perhaps some direction here in terms of who could be the person that contact, or staff member that contacts them, something like that. I think it would be very exciting for us to get involved in that. There are people who are probably sitting here right now saying, you know, we have a hard time getting a place for even pleasure craft to pull in on our side of the river. But this is a commercial entity. And being that it is commercial, the, from what I'm reading in my research, the Corps of Engineers is going to have to pay more than just token attention to this, to this project. $1 billion, that's billion with a B, and I don't know, I don't think anybody knows at this point, except Viking, how they're going to be investing in that. I had heard that they're going to build four custom ships that will ply the waters of the Mississippi. What else they're going to be spending their money on? Will they be spending it on dock space? Will they be spending it on, I don't know what? But I think it would be exciting for us to grab that brass ring and join in with them if it's at all possible.
So I'm looking for direction. Viking cruise ships come by our shores here, they're going to want to stop, right? Most people, hey, we got to stop here. You bet. This is a unique community. I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember. I think that, you know, let's make that contact, staff will move forward with that. Maybe there's partnerships that we could work with, or like the Marina, Kings Cove, you know, and then maybe shuttle people or whatever might work in the future, who we could ever partnership with, or what we might have to do that might be required, or it's certainly worth investigating, and we certainly have a lot to offer in any potential stop, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for that announcement. Councilmembers, any other announcements? Councilmember Logi?
Thank you, Your Honor. There is a HEDRA meeting on Thursday, March 12th, at 6:30 here in Council chambers. I also believe there's a finance committee. I'll let the chair.
Monday, the night, starting at 6 o'clock, to discuss some art space issues.
Okay, so Finance Committee meeting on Monday, March 9th at 6, and HEDRA Thursday, March 12th at 6:30. Okay, any other further announcements, Councilmembers? What we have before us is we have a Planning Commission meeting coming up. I have a few announcements here on 7:00 PM at City Hall on Monday, March 9th as well. On Tuesday, March 10th, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting at 6:00 PM at the Joint Maintenance Facility out by Pine Street. The Police Reserve's banquet, many of us have been looking forward to that, has been rescheduled to Thursday, March 12th at 6:00 PM. On that note, many of you may have heard that Lieutenant Rick Noddy of our department lost his son over the weekend. Our prayers and thoughts are with he and his family. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And also, I'd like to take the opportunity, we all know that there's might be snow coming tonight, we don't know what that is, at least recently, but we're going to have snow tonight, maybe snow tomorrow, we may have a snow emergency. So here's a good opportunity to plug our NIXLE.com opportunity that allows residents to know either by text message, email, or phone call, that a snow emergency is in effect. And so anyone out there who would like to sign up for that, it's free of charge, please do so at www.nixle.com. And there's also information about it on our website, on the city website. So this might be a good opportunity to do so, so we don't, we don't want to tag anybody for being on the streets with a snow emergency being called. Council, that's it for now. I'm going to ask that I take a motion for us to recess for the purposes of us to go into closed-door session and for recess for a couple of minutes to do so. Councilmember Brock's makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. That motion prevails.